Good morning. This is August 26, 2024, meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on September 3, 2024, beginning at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. Roll call. It looks like everyone's present. Has everyone reviewed the August 12 minutes? If so, the Chair would address a motion to approve these minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
At a motion and a second? To approve the minutes from August 12, 2024? Discussion from the audience or from the commission? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the agenda? I want to point out that if anyone is here for item 18 and 19, the solar and the wind farm, that will be continued to Monday, September 9. So if you're gonna want to speak on that, you might want to hold your speech until then, although we will let you speak today if you're here. The Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Discussion from the audience? From the commission? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1027, for Carrie Pogony, to review an accessory structure, a pole barn, to be constructed prior to her primary structure in a rural residential district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1027, as the property is under new ownership and there is now a single-family residence on the property. Item five is Conditional Use Permit Amendment Review, CUR 1425, for Jeff Devaney, to review the increase in size of two existing storage units in a highway service district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Amendment Review, CUR 1425, with conditions. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1516, for Nick Hobart, to review a guest house in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1516, with conditions. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1824, for Plainsville Mobile Manor, to review an existing mobile home park in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1824, with conditions. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2231, for Scott Moore, to review a two-story multifamily dwelling in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2231, with conditions. Item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 2232, for Scott Moore, to review a two-story multifamily dwelling in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2232, with conditions. Item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit Review, 2233, for Scott Moore, to review a two-story multifamily dwelling in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2233, with conditions. Item number 11 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 2328, for Golden West Telecommunications, to review a telecommunications building in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2328, with conditions. And finally, item 12 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CO CUR 24-0005, for Dan and Joan Palmerinki. Wade Reynolds is the agent, to review a multifamily dwelling in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review, CO CUR 24-0005, with conditions.
Would staff like any items from the consent agenda removed?
No, not at this time.
Would the Planning Commission like any items removed from the consent agenda?
Number five.
Number five? Would anyone from the audience like an item removed from the consent agenda? No? Item number five.
Jason, I'll save you a lot of time. All I wanted to do, point out on the picture, I believe he's gone ahead and put those additions on, and somewhere we're gonna get an updated overhead view, but the one is wider than the other, so I don't think he added the extra width to both of them, did he? If you recall it right. I think he's done the extra length, but the one seems to be wider. He went out to the full 50 feet he had available. Does that sound right? Forty to fifty?
Yeah, there was some difference. I didn't do that staff report, but I'll try to piece it together here. So, yeah, I believe when he proposed it, there was some discrepancy about how wide the buildings were gonna be.
Yeah.
And I can double-check and find out if he did build.
I'm just saying, I think it'll catch up. It's just for the record more than anything, because this picture is what it looked like before he did his conditional use.
Right. Yeah, this year's county aerials that came out aren't very good.
Correct.
They're not very clear, so it'd be.
But I think he only added the width to the one because he just didn't have room for the drive to go through and meet the requirements. That was all I had. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just knew you'd been there enough times that you'd know. Thank you.
I'm gonna need a motion first to approve.
Yep, I'm gonna move to approve number five. As per staff's recommendation, I gotta see.
I need to, I didn't call for the motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, so let's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to approve all items except item number five?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as submitted, with the exception of item number five. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Charlie.
Move to approve Agenda item number five, which is Conditional Use Permit 14-25, per staff's recommendation with 11 conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number five in the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 13 is Conditional Use Permit, CO CU 24-0025, to allow an accessory dwelling unit. The applicant owners are David and Megan Collier. David is here if you have any questions for him. The size of the lot is 11.56 acres. It is agricultural district. There is no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. In the Pennington County Planning and Zoning, Section 324, lists seven criteria that must be met to allow an ADU. These are displayed on the slide. There were, in the interdepartmental review, there were two requests from the onsite water treatment system and the county addressing, and these have been addressed as conditions of approval. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CO CU 0025, with conditions.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for Christine?
I have one.
Michael?
They're going to fix this house up. It's in the picture. They're gonna live in it, and they're gonna build another house. When the other house gets built, this will be the ADU.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yep, that's all I've got.
I have a question, too. It says existing land use is vacant, but this.
So the house is actually not livable at the moment, and they had taken it off of the tax roll, so they'll have to put it back on once the construction.
Once it's, okay. Thank you. I would address a motion on CO CU 24-0025.
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve CO CU 2025? Any discussion?
Just one. I assume then that this one's gonna end up with a separate utility, because they're doing it first?
And it already actually still has. Sorry. It has the utility still hooked to it, the electric, and they're going to redo the septic.
So you're, per se, they're getting by with existing, so they don't meet the new. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and there are 14 conditions with this item. Discussion from the audience? Yes?
I lease the land right beside it.
Come up here and speak into the microphone, please.
I don't want to talk in it.
I lease the, I'm Jerry Hammerquist from Caputa, and I lease the land to the south of it, and it borders the irrigation ditch and everything else, and Nina Van Sickle from Opel owns the land, and I hate it. And she did not get a notification of this until Saturday, and she went in and signed for the notification, and that's what she called me about. She thought she should have been notified way ahead of time. We don't know what amounts to do it. I don't know whether we're against it or not, but she doesn't know anything about it. And she's my landlady, and so I have to be representing her. And I, I don't know what conditional land use, and you say there's modification or qualifications and stuff on it. I don't know what they are, and she doesn't have any idea. So, like I say, she lives in Opel, and I'm just representing her. But she only had Sunday to check this out, and that's what her problem was.
Christine, we did mail out letters to landowners?
Yes. And we have all the receipts, so I'm not sure why it took so long to get there.
Well.
Or she just got here on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yep. Did you have any specific questions? Did you have any specific questions?
Well, I just was, she wanted to know why she wasn't notified earlier, and if there's nothing bothering her land or anything, we don't have any problem with it. So, that's all.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Sir, you know, these notices, sometimes people get them, there's not a whole lot of information on them, because it's more legal stuff than anything else, but if you would like some, you know, the paperwork that we have, you're more than welcome to have that, to be able to explain it to her, but it's pretty much accessory dwelling, and then they plan on building a house, and so that, I don't think it's gonna affect your hang operations or anything like that.
As long as it doesn't affect her land, we have no issues at all. But she was worried about, she didn't know what it meant, and so.
It's unfortunate, some of those notices, when, they've gotta be certified, but if you wait too long.
Yeah.
Get them, then it's, you know, you ain't available to get them to the weekend before. It's kinda tough, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Jerry? I've got one, too. Tell her that she has the right to submit, it's reviewed in one year, is another part of it. So if they don't perform the requirements of this, she certainly has a right to bring that up.
Yeah.
And that would be before the whole commission.
How is she gonna know the requirements, though?
Madam Chair.
The paperwork.
And I can get that paperwork.
Learn.
We'll make sure she gets copies of the paperwork. I would think that's a good thing, what the Commissioner indicated.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carried. Item number 14 is the Vacation of Platt, CO VP 24-0006. And we do have someone on Zoom for this item.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunessen, Assistant Planning Director. Again, Agenda item number 14 is Vacation of Platt, CO VPL 24-0006, and it is to vacate four existing easements along former lot lines of the subject property. As you can see on the screen, this is the subject property as it sits today. This is what it looked like before. These are the previous lot lines indicated in red. This is kind of a housekeeping item for the applicant, the landowner. These easements were not vacated prior to them filing the final plat with the Register of Deeds. So that's what they're here to do today. Maurice Reiner is the applicant. He's on Zoom if anyone asks questions for him. Location of the property is 155 Falcon Lane. It is 2.08 acres, zone suburban residential district, access is off Falcon Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. It also did go to Black Hills Energy, who indicated they did not have any utilities within these easements. The Board of Commissioners approved lot line adjustment to plat LAPL 23-02 on March 7 of 2023. Staff has received no public comment or objections to this request, and it meets all the requirements of the codified law to vacate these easements. And with that, staff recommends approval of vacation of plat CO VPL 24-0006, with one condition.
Does the Planning Commission have questions for Jason?
Madam Chair, I do. Jason, and I just looked, if we look at Exhibit A, can you bring that up? Thank you. All right, we're coming in with that 40-foot total. In other words, I saw this at first as similar to what we did in Hill City that got questioned. And we come in with the 40-foot, and then they're cutting it down to the 20. My immediate thought was, and the director changed me, used to be 25 feet was required to allow for access. Now it's changed to where it's 40. Yeah, are we taking away the appropriate accesses by doing D? In other words, there should be still 20 left?
Nope.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, not at all.
Fill me in, will you?
Yep, so that 20 feet still provides access to this adjacent lot, six up here to, you can see, 175 up here, so that's where it would be providing the access to. They still do have the appropriate access there.
Oh, the lower, the, 20 from center won't give 40?
Yep.
Isn't the 40 the requirement now?
No, it'd be the, be 20 feet for that, for the easement. Maybe I'm not understanding the question.
Because I see that the 30, it's got 30 foot still listed as private access easement. I'm just saying, I don't want to walk into one of those situations that got done before and stick us in a liability situation.
Sure. Right. Yeah, the easement that's here, that was there before, provided access all the way through the property because it wasn't their property before, but now that easement is no longer required because they don't need to grant an easement to themselves to get to their property.
Okay. Where is the access to that if they were to sell that down the road? Because it is, 5R2 is one lot and 8R is another. If they did sell that separately, because it's already.
Yep, so the lot AR is its own separate lot now.
Correct.
Yeah. And that's what that easement was providing access to that lot previously, but now, since the lot line changed, that's no longer required.
40 feet is this right here. That's the access to the lot.
There's only 20 to the lot. There's 40 coming in, though, between somebody else's lot up here, Lot 6, is that? But we're taking 10 away from it by D. So it's not 40, it's 30. So does that mean they're going down to that? That's where I got lost. If we're going down, it says 30-foot wide easement. Is that something that was already platted? I guess would be the way to put it. So they can get by with D by, because it leaves 30, rather than 40, which is our normal. That's, that's the only place I was getting lost.
Hmm. Okay. So it provides 40, all the way up to the both lots.
Right up to both lots. I agree with that. 20 on each side.
Yep. That's, is.
But we're taking away 10 of that by D.
Yep, so that's a utility easement that we're taking away from that on.
But then we don't, we're not meeting the counter requirement of 40.
So the, yeah, the 40 only applies up to that lot line, because that 40 is providing access to this current lot and the adjacent lot to the east. So you can see maybe a little bit better on this picture.
In other words?
So that 40-foot easement goes here. You can see this property line for Lot 175.
Mm-hmm.
Goes all the way down this property line here.
Right.
So that would be the 40 feet that's required, and that provides access to both of these lots. So it doesn't need to continue on beyond the subject property.
Okay, and that's no section line or anything like that, then?
Sure.
Okay. I can see what you're saying. So it's cutting it back down to that 30-foot wide easement is all that's gonna be.
Right.
After. Okay. And you're taking 10 of that away. All right. I, I agree. It's a little bit complicated for me versus what the ordinance is, because we're rolling in with the 40 for the access, so they could still sell it separately, is what you're saying, and the purchaser could get access appropriately.
These will be legal, it'll have legal access to all these lots.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have a question or want to speak on this item? Mr. Reiner, did you have something you'd like to add to this discussion?
Well, thank you very much. This is Morris Reiner. And, yeah, we just bought that little piece of land from the neighbor to kind of straighten out that lot, because it was kind of an L shape. It'll help us with the driveway sometime down the road. And so as Jason explained, there's no longer a lot line there where it used to be because it was moved, and so just eliminating, vacating the easement that really has no, I guess, no use, right? Since the lot line's changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair would address the motion on this item.
Second.
Been moved by Michael and seconded by Kevin, per staff's recommendation, Vacation of Platt VP 24-0006, with one condition. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 15, 16, and 17 together for discussion purposes only and vote on them separately.
15, 16, and 17. Okay.
Second.
There was a motion and a second to discuss items 15, 16, and 17 together, but make separate motions on each item. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor again. Item 15 is Preliminary Plan, PPL 24-0010, is to subdivide and create lots 1A and 1B of Boyle subdivision. The applicant is Reynolds &amp; Livingston LLC. Chris Livingston is the applicant. The surveyor is All Aspects, Brad Limbo. The location of the property is 22491 Highway 385. It's a little over four acres. It's currently zoned highway service district, and there is actually quite a few structures on this property. There's a retention pond. It's where that big chair is, behind the Sugar Shack. There's a large shop building, an ADU, and a home on this building. And they're requesting to subdivide this property into two lots. The front portion of the lot that's right behind Sugar Shack, they are working with Sugar Shack to sell that to them, so they have additional parking and additional space for the Sugar Shack property. And then the rear portion of the property used to be kind of a recreational area. It had RV sites and some rentals, and now it's going to be a residential property. These properties are up for sale, or they were up for sale. That rear portion of the property, they are looking to rezone that to a rural residential district in order to meet the requirements of the residential use that it has right now, because they're both highway service district. That front lot, they will keep, which is Lot 1B, as highway service district, because the Sugar Shack is going to utilize it for their purposes in the rear portion of it. They're requesting it to go to rural residential district. Staff doesn't have any issue with either of this. A portion of this is in Lawrence County. They have already filed the plat of that north portion of Lot 1B with Lawrence County. There are some issues on the residential portion of the property. There are some encroachments in the section line and some setback issues. They have submitted those applications to be heard by the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Commissioners. In addition, they do have an ADU on the property that this board will hear at a later date. So with that, staff is recommending approval of that preliminary plan with conditions. They are recommending approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and I can show you. This is how the property currently sits right now with the highway service. All of the property to the north is Lawrence County. That's the subject property that they're looking for, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, because currently, if you see here the Comprehensive Plan, a portion of that, they have it as rural residential district and suburban residential district. They're looking to change that, or keep that, as highway service district, and this as rural residential. A Comprehensive Plan Amendment is not needed on this portion, because suburban residential is a higher density than the rural residential district. So staff is recommending approval of all of the requests, because we feel like it's in harmony, and it's cleaning up this property and making it so the purchaser can use it as a residential property instead of a resort property, and to give the Sugar Shack property additional parking area, which is needed, because they do have limited space on their property, because they did lose a portion of their parking area with the 385 expansion. So.
Are there questions for Brittany?
Is Sugar Shack gonna be at the exact same location they were?
Yes, they have actually submitted their building permit. They're in process of doing that. The site plan has changed a little bit from what they had. The biggest limitation for them was parking, so they're looking at some of the parking that is to the north in the Lawrence County with that country store, and then purchasing this part of the property, this front part of this property, to give them additional space.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Brittany?
Yeah. And if we look at the rapid map, and that's, I get so messed up between looking at the drawings and the rapid map from your survey, and a good one to look at is the one right alongside of it. And that, of course, would have all the property on it, whether it's in Pennington or, the surveyed one has all the property, whether it's in Pennington or whether it's in Lawrence.
Correct. The portion that's in Lawrence County is this portion up here.
Okay.
Because this is the county line right here. If you look at this section line, these are off. This property line is actually the section line, so if you look, this portion of the property abuts the highway up here.
All right, and Sugar Shack, in your picture there, still existed. In other words, it hadn't burned down yet.
Right.
And.
So they're gonna be purchasing basically this portion of the property?
Correct. That's what I'm trying to pin down.
Yeah, it's the portion that doesn't, any of the structures, it's basically kind of along this tree line. There's a topographical change right here, and that's where they're looking at.
Well, and I, and I'm aware, just from the years of working on that, that that's also, besides the parking, they have a, they had a septic problem for location, too, in rebuilding, if they were to rebuild, and that certainly gives them some assistance on that, too, for locating.
Correct. And they've actually submitted their septic plan for the Sugar Shack building. They're doing several very large holding tanks.
Okay.
Because there wasn't area, because this area just wasn't conducive, they had a lot of issues with it in this area, so they're actually putting them.
Too close to the drainage?
Mm-hmm. They're putting them up here. So this'll be part of their stormwater impoundment and some of the impoundment for this creek through there.
As usual, you're way ahead of me, because that's, that's the next issue. I realize it's not part of this issue, but the septic's one of the issues that was in the, over the years.
Correct. And that was some of the, like I said, they had quite a bit of limitation on this property, because it, a lot of it was grandfathered. on this property because a lot of it was grandfathered in. And this portion here was all, that is basically removed now because of the three eighty-five expansion. So they're trying to fit their parking, so some of their overflow parking will be here, and then they'll be able to utilize this area as well.
I think it's great that we're working with them, and that it helps them. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from the audience? Any discussion from the audience?
Madam Chair, and I did point out just to the typo that's in your page four or five, lot A is referenced twice, just for the record. You wanted one A and one B.
Correct. Lot one A is three point one seven acres.
Thank you.
And lot one B is one point one acres.
The Chair would address the motion on this, on CO PPL twenty-four dash zero zero one zero.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve preliminary plan CO PPL twenty-four dash zero zero one zero with thirteen conditions. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now, comprehensive plan amendment CO CA twenty-four dash zero 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 eight. Are there any questions on this item? The Chair would address a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Was there? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to, per staff's recommendation, to approve comprehensive plan amendment CO CA twenty-four dash zero 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 eight. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then finally, rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 seven. The Chair would address a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Charlie and seconded by Lori. Been moved and seconded, per staff's recommendation, to approve rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 seven. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item number eighteen.
So items eighteen and nineteen are conditional use permits for Yaro Tech LLC. It's to allow utility scale solar and wind system in an agriculture district. And it was advertised for this meeting, and then the applicant had decided to move their public meeting in New Underwood until actually tonight. So with that, they wanted to have the public meeting before the hearing, so we re-advertised these two for the September ninth Planning Commission meeting. So staff's recommendation is for both items eighteen and nineteen to be continued to the September ninth Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this item to the September ninth meeting per staff's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
You have to speak up.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, or to continue conditional use permit CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero two two to the September ninth meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, I move that we do it for the next item, too, which involves the same particular agenda item, be item number nineteen. So let me look and see what the number on is. Is CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero two three to the September ninth meeting per staff's recommendation.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to continue CO CU twenty-four dash zero zero two three to the September ninth meeting per staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? The meeting this evening is in New Underwood? The meeting this evening is in New Underwood?
Yes, I think.
Do you know the time and location?
I believe it's at six o'clock at the community center.
Should we attend that, I mean, or isn't that a good idea?
It's up to you if you would like to attend. Staff is not attending, because we want the applicant to have an opportunity to discuss with the landowners the concerns and their project plan, so.
So it's probably gonna be like this, some of the same people that were, that spoke at the previous meeting are gonna express their concerns, and it's, it'll be like a question, like, answer thing?
Correct.
Okay.
And the actual engineer will be present. The VP was here for the meeting, but the actual engineer, Mark, will actually be at the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Do you know if the engineer will be present on September ninth?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, no need for an executive session today?
No.
Okay. County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
Items from the public? Don't have any. Items from staff? No. Items from the membership?
Are any of you guys gonna go to that meeting tonight?
I might.
I don't plan to.
No? Okay.
I'd probably stand up and say things I shouldn't, so.
The Chair would address a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.